Okay. Down. There I go. How's that? There we go. Okay, I'd like to call this planning commission work session to order for Thursday, November 6, 2025. My name is Carl Johnson and I'm the chairman of Clark County Planning Commission. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to announce that our planning commission work sessions are hybrid, both in person and via WebEx. For the virtual and in-person members of the planning commission and staff, please ensure that your microphones are turned off or muted unless you are speaking. There will not be any public comment during the work session, but members of the public can watch or listen. This evening's agenda is as follows. We will be working on the comp plan overview and housing for all planning tool. They have to review and that'll be with Jose and Oliver. So with that, gentlemen, just make sure you say your name before you speak. So we'll start off with Oliver and Jose and/or.
Okay, good evening, planning commission members. For the record, Oliver Ojaka, community planning director. And as the chair indicated, I'm here with Jose Alvarez, who is a land use program manager. And of course, we have a legal council here, Ms. Chris Cook. So we're all here to present this material and then we'll be taking questions from planning commission members. Part of the reason, if I may, before we go to the slides, is that we want to begin the conversation again with the planning commission. Some of you may have seen this, what we are going to go through with you. But I know there are some new PC members, so this is another opportunity to bring them up to speed on decisions that have been made and how we went about doing the, using those council decision, population, jobs and so forth to go through allocations. And that allocation came to you and you made your recommendation to the council. And finally, they had a series of meetings where they made some changes to your recommendation based on input from the cities. And that allocation was completed and they used that to prepare their proposed land use alternative, which we also shared with you. And that is the basis of the current DEIS, which the comment period will end by the end of this month. So that's where we are. So this is a refresher, but also to begin to prepare you for conversation that will lead to the selection of the preferred land use alternative. So with that, let's go to the next slide. I'll be going through the first few slides and then I'll turn it over to Jose Alvarez to go through the rest of the, of our discussion with you. So this is the agenda or the presentation overview. We'll start with some background allocation methodology using the previous decision that the council has made on population, housing and employment. And then we'll talk briefly about the next steps. Next slide, please. You have seen this before and would like to remind both the public, the planning commission and council about our project schedule. And these are the four phases of this process. We started with the project initiation and then went into shaping of the plan. And then we are getting into refinement and review. And finally, the fourth phase here will be the adoption process. All the checked mark, things that we have already completed, those two areas that are squared in review and refinement, that is the draft environmental impact statement. We are in the review process of that analysis. As I indicated, that comment period we're allowing for 60 days. We also, for public comment, which will end November 30th, we also have in our staff, open every toss there from now until November 20th to receive working public to provide us. And we are there to answer questions. Those that are coming are welcome to submit their comments to us. The last second item there is the agricultural land study. If you followed, the county just issued a press release indicating that that study is now out. The consultant that the county hired, ECO, not West, and Triangle Associate, who did the public engagement outreach, they submitted that report on November 4th. So it's out. You can go to a web, a project webpage. There is a link there and read the report. If you like us to send it individually or send it to the PC, we can do that, but it is on our webpage. That then will, which is what I was saying earlier, we will begin the conversation on selection of the preferred. You see the rest of the things there that we will complete with the preferred. We will then get into working on the final environmental impact statement, which will also be out for public review. Hence, that is issued. We will then begin the process of our 60 day notice to commerce, which is on the adoption process. And you can see the remainder of the items there. As I have been sharing with council and the public, you all know that by state statute, this plan was, this plan update was supposed to be completed June 30th of 2025. The legislature amended or extended that deadline to December. We're not going to meet that deadline, the statutory deadline. So we're looking at final adoption, assuming this, because sometimes when I put this out, I said it's subject to change. Assuming it doesn't change, we are looking at completing this periodic update by June 2nd of next year. And by the county charter, once the council adopted the, or approved the adopting ordinance, we have to wait 10 days before that action goes into effect. Next slide, please. So this slide is just more of bringing you again or reminding you or refocusing you on the decisions that have been made to date. As I indicated earlier, we started with in the initial beginning of the project, the council adopted a public participation plan and preliminary scope of work. That is required also as part of this process because the statute requires public participation and then continues public participation until the gavel comes down. So that was the first thing that the council did. They, they had a hearing March 21st and adopted, following that, public participation and scope of work. The council then adopted a population projection for us to, to plan for. And this plan is from 2025 to 2045, a 20-year planning horizon. So you can see the population forecast or estimate that the council adopted 718,154 new people or total population by 2045. If you subtract the existing population, again, all this information is from OFM. If you subtract the existing population from this number, it gives you the difference is what we are planning for, very close to more than 180,000 new folks, given the current population. That was adopted on May 2nd, 2023. So you can see how far we have gone. The council also adopted a population projection indicating that by 2045, the total job focus will be 269,000. That was adopted on August 8th. If you subtract the current farm job in Clark County with this number by 2045, the difference will be close to 88,000 plus new jobs. So as well as we are planning for rooftops, we also are planning, planning for the job associated with that. That decision was, like I said, made on August 8th. With those two decision points, we then began the population and employment allocation. That was, that came before you, but the council adopted that on May 7th, 2024. We came before you, went over all the land use alternative as provided by our city partners. And that decision was made by council on the alternative to be studied in the DEIS. So that decision was made on April 8th, 2025. Next slide. So I think from here, I can turn this over to Jose. And both Jose and I are here to answer questions that you may have. This is just a quick synopsis or refreshment of the decision that had been made to date and how we went about. You can see as we go through this, the allocation was made to various jurisdictions, which led them to the proposal that they currently submitted to us and the basis for the current DEIS. So I'll stop there, Jose, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Oliver. So this slide is just the population allocation, the amount of growth over the next 20-year period. This was actually 2023 to 2045 when we did this. So as Oliver said, it's about 190,000 new folks anticipated rural, urban split, that about 5% of that population would go to rural area and then the remainder would be in the urban area. This is the population estimate and allocation by UGA. So based on the existing vacant buildable lands model, that's what kind of was used to sort of break down a percentage of the allocation. And then there was a series of back and forth with the jurisdictions because as we'll get into in a moment, there was a new requirement from the state to accommodate growth and particularly housing by income bands, and those were broken out. And so that was required some negotiations.
Quick question on that. Was the, the, was it woodland or battleground? It seemed like the woodland population, is that 145 is what?
Yeah, just a portion that's in.
Oh, the portion in Clark County, that's right. Because it's a tiny little horse.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Presentation is stuck, let's see. No. Yeah, let's see. All right. Particularly finicky. Okay, so the housing needs projection. Essentially, this is based on the new tool from the Department of Commerce that they created for all of the jurisdictions in the state. Based on population that the county selected, they would provide sort of estimate of the 25, 2045 future need of housing by different income bands and used a 2020 base to, of the existing housing by income bands. And that's how we would get the projection. And this shows the different categories, the emergency shelters and the range 0 to 30, 30 to 50, 50 to 80, 80 to 120, and then above 120. And I'll have a breakout in a, in a slide coming up, what that translates into in terms of income by year for those, for those income bands. And then some of the assumptions that are in the methodology that they provided. So this slide, again, it's kind of small, but it shows countywide in 2045, we would need 309,711 housing units. As of 2020, we have 194,000 housing units. And so that would be 115,000 that would be needed in the next 20 years. If the numbers seem big, I mean, that's yeah, yeah. Yeah, so adding on 115,000 housing units in 20 years will be, starting with 194,000, that's a big, big, big lift. So, all right. Let's see. So here's the breakout countywide. And then for the different income bands, there's the income associated with it. So 0 to 30% would be 33,850 income, and these are $2023. And this is information produced by the federal housing urban development HUD. Updates these figures annually. And I think the other thing to note is that the area median income for Clark County is tied to the Portland metro area. And that's, there was a change 10, 12 years ago to make that Portland metro area. I think it used to be a little more refined, but that's, the fed, the feds did that. And so we're part of the metro area. So I think the income may be a little higher regionally than what the rents. Yeah. So let's see. Oh, the other note in here is this, we updated this base from 2020, which was the previous side that showed us needing 115,000. We then subtracted out 12,000, the 12,000 housing units that were added between 2020 and 2023 to get to that 103,000 figure. I think, and initially, we, because they were done by income bands, we were looking at subtracting it all out from the, the higher end of the bracket. But we talked to the cities and we were able to distribute that a little more evenly based on information they had, if they were able to, they had any knowledge of any housing that was built at those lower income levels. So it didn't take the, wasn't a hit on all of the 120 or greater percentage, which is the last column. So it's a
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you say that again? So.
So I have a spreadsheet. And I, we, we worked with each of the jurisdictions to provide us sort of estimates of what type of housing they, they saw being built in that three-year period and try to fit it into one of those income bands. So that not all of the, otherwise, all of the distribution would have come out of that greater than 120%. I think housing. It was more like, I know for the unincorporated county, we looked at sort of the housing types, apartments that were added, looking at what the rents would be, see if they fit into the 50 to 80. Just looking online of what rents are currently going for and sort of estimating, yeah. And then, yeah, seeing what kind of houses were sold for would be another indicator. Okay, so this is again, the same information, but broken down by jurisdiction. So you can see that Vancouver and the city of Vancouver, the unincorporated Vancouver UGA, and rural Clark County is included in this as well. At the time, they didn't have a, they didn't have the tool to distinguish rural areas. So we just kind of lumped that together with all of the housing. The, I think the, I'll show you in another slide, but at the bottom of the page, you can see the percentages for each of those income bands and what it makes up of the, the total 103,000 housing units needed. So, you know, in that, greater than 120% of area median income is where we expect. There's about 31% of your total housing units are going to come from there. And then, so I think from that, 80 to greater than 120% is your market rate housing. Maybe dipping into a little bit of that 50 to 80%. Might get some, some of the townhouse infill housing as a percentage of that. And this next slide sums those up by those, those bands, the, the bigger band. So you can see that, you know, less than 80% of area median income would make up 52% of the housing needed over the next 20 years. And then 48% would be that greater than 80%. So that's what's driving a lot of the need to, you know, upzone, plan for more multifamily housing is to try to accommodate that 52% of the housing that would be needed.
Well, with the 12,000 that were built in the last three years, do you have an idea of the percentage of what?
Not very, well, I, not very many below the 50%. The city of Vancouver probably has the most that, that does lower income bands. There were some at the 50 to 80. I think most were like in the 80 to 100, probably.
Thank you. Well, if, if you look at, if we did 4,000 houses or housing units in a year and we have 20 years to do that, that gets us about 80,000. We're kind of missing the mark, so.
Yeah, I think the lower end of the income bands is probably going to take the longest because market's not going to provide there. You're going to be dependent on getting some sort of subsidy or additional dollar figures to try to accommodate that.
Incentives or the county and the states are going to have to work together to try to make this happen.
Oh, yeah, there's going to be a lot of work that's beyond what we've typically done. As this, I would, yeah, there's no question that.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can provide the land and the opportunity. But if it, if it doesn't get built, then some other force has to come in to, to make that happen.
And I think I think the county is looking at taking an option that the state has made available to them to put some money aside, was it two, how many millions of dollars?
No, I think if, if depending on the action of the council, if they take that provision as provided by state and, and take a councilmatic action and that will be 0.1% sales tax and that will be diverted to affordable housing. That action could raise close to 6.4 million, which is not enough. But the city have taken, the city of Vancouver have taken that action. We don't know what our council is going to do. But I can share with you that, and I've made this observation before, that in the next legislative session, all these new rules that the legislature passed, they have to find a way to fund it. Yeah, that's where it's going to come. It may not be a whole lot, we don't know yet. But there is conversation that they should step up to fund how some of this is going to be built. I know also that there is a deal that the legislature passed requiring the University of Washington Real Estate Division to start collecting data from local jurisdictions of how well we are doing and using that to report back to the legislature, which could push them to allocate more funding to make this happen or maybe to change this requirement. We don't know yet, but that was written in the, in the bill.
Say that in the last three years, very few housing were developed that were, that were needed. Less than 80%.
Correct.
I would say just to kind of put some color to that, if, if you build at 400,000 dollars a unit, which typically is running between right now, 400 and 600,000 dollars a unit for anything that the government touches, just because of the, their process. But just even at 400,000, which would be really good for the government, you got $20 billion we would need just to meet the 50,000 units at that. So it's, it's kind of a number that, it's like, they're, they're making this plan for it, but they're like, oh, are you going to send us $20 billion in grants over the next, $1 billion a year over the next 20 years in grants to, for affordable housing? Yeah.
Something's got to give. Yep.
That's not their job. To meet this requirement.
And I think the, you know, this, it's a back and forth. And I think that the state, I think there's some recent hearings board decision, but they want to show that we're trying to bring the horse to water, making an effort. But, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, sure.
This is the first time that the state, you may say is detecting, but the state is saying, local jurisdictions, you have been. The language, the previous language is encouraged. Now they are doing it planned for.
And provide.
And provide, yes. So that's the distinction. In this case, we are providing, making sure that we are providing adequate zoning and a variety, that could allow a variety of housing type. As you all know, the bill that the legislature passed recently led us to opening up the single-family district to allow for a variety of housing type, which you all approved. We are working on the multifamily mid, of a medium and high-density district, which our consultant shared with you last time. All local governments can do is provide the land. Yes. And if in our policy, in our housing policy, we have a language in there that says incentive and subsidies, what this new ruling, and Chris can correct me, is that you have to show where these funding sources going to come to make it happen. So there are some opportunities out there that the council have been, the county have been using to assist in Vancouver Housing Authority and all the folks that do.
What, if, if I heard you correctly, it's up to, so we, we are, as in part of the planning commission in the planning department, you, you were providing the land, it'll be up to the county, to the county council, to figure out how they want to budget to help on, on that? Is that, is that, is that what you said?
Well, the, the state are saying these are, I think they're calling it, is it fourteen oh nine fund? I can't remember the exact name. We can send that to you that, eh, you know, the, the council may decide, yeah, we want to provide some funding that could be used. They haven't made a decision, like I said, but if they, if they make that decision, it, it could be something that could go to the vote of the people, for example, or they can make that decision from the dials. But if they do, it might be just a drop in the bucket. I know some project by the Vancouver Housing Authority and forty million, more than that, to complete maybe ninety units. Six point four million is just not going to cut it, but they're going to be going after some other grants, federal and other opportunities that enable them, put the funding package together to make that happen. So that's only thing that we, I know of, and I think, hopefully, the county will, council will make a decision one way or the other, and we'll look at all the funding sources. Right now, I know that the, there's a provision to use recording fees to also support affordable housing, whether it's supportive housing and so forth. But you know that recording fee will not go a long way. It does also depending on the level of housing activity in Glad County.
Has the state directed the jurisdictions on funding levels at the, at this point? That's still, that's, that has not come down yet?
No.
This is, we, we've just set up a policy, and now we're gonna, we'll have to come readdress it. And then, then.
And like, like, here's what I, here's, here's my, your takeaway from what I'm sharing with you. The state has passed some rules, if you will, or statute that says, county, you can do X, Y, and Z to help in the case of affordable housing. I mentioned this zero point one percent sales tax. There is option, the county can take that to the folks to vote on. They can do it from the, they can take that action from the dials. If they do, as I shared with you, our finance team have run the number, if they do that, there's likelihood that that could generate six point four million, very similar annually, okay, annually. So that will go a long way in, you know, supporting affordable housing in whatever form. No decision had been made on how to spend that. Like I said, the city of Vancouver have taken that opportunity. There's the only city here in Glad County that have taken that. They also passed their, I can't remember the name, proposition, whatever number it is, and all that funding generated is going towards supporting affordable housing. They can show what they have been doing. And in this case, we have to show, like I said, if we have in a housing element, I think when I've come before you, I said that this plan update, if we are successful, successful in our housing and climate bill, that will be a significant improvement in terms of what the state is requiring us to do. So housing is a key issue. I think some of the cities and counties that have submitted their plan, the public, I would say the public is really focusing on how those cities and counties are meeting this new housing requirement. Our goal is to prepare this plan in such a way that we are meeting whatever the criteria is in terms of providing adequate land and then identifying funding sources. If we have a policy calling for subsidies and incentive, we have to be able to show where would that come from.
I'd have to look, but I, I wouldn't be surprised.
We have a long way to. We have a long way to go. Yeah. We have a long way to go. Go ahead, Jose.
Wow. So this slide is the employment. Allocation by jurisdiction. The total, the bottom line is eighty-eight thousand jobs. The sixty-five thousand jobs, just what's in the urban growth area and within our vacant buildable lands model. So the, the government jobs aren't included in that because our model excludes publicly owned lands, which is where most of the government jobs would be. The next thing, construction, we had an assumption that there would be jobs but not land necessary. And so there was a percentage for that. And then assumed five percent of the employment would happen in the rural area. And the work from home percentage, which is a very conservative, four percent. And I know that there's been some interest in, by some of the jurisdictions to increase that. So that's how we got those totals. What I wanted to do here is, let's see, take you to, hopefully, the land use alternatives map. So one of the things I wanted to share, and I think we, some of the proposed changes in the upzoning that we were looking at doing, particularly in the Vancouver UGA, see if we can get this to, let's start with, so these areas, red and blue on the, in the top here is one of the expansion areas for employment. This is north of one hundred seventy-ninth, north of one hundred ninety-ninth, along Tenth Avenue is one of the areas that's proposed for expansion for employment. And then here to the west of WSU, we are proposing areas for expansion for employment. And this is really driven, when, when we looked at the two thousand and three vacant buildable lands model for the unincorporated Vancouver UGA, we were pretty close to the number essentially having parity with the capacity we needed for housing and the capacity needed for employment. The issue is that there was a disconnect between the capacity for housing, where it was mostly for that eighty percent and greater single-family zone property, and we didn't have enough for the lower end. So what, two things that, well, a couple of things that we looked at were our mixed-use zone had a split of sixty percent residential, forty percent going to employment. What we had been seeing is that is really, it was more like eighty-twenty. And the twenty, the employment, usually commercial, would sit vacant. And we had a couple of requests where developments have happened, the mixed-use development, the housing's gone, nothing's happened with the commercial. And so there was a couple of requests to bring that, to, to make zone changes to that, to higher-density multifamily. In talking to, I think some of the folks, they, they were looking at like a ninety-ten split. And so that was what we were proposing. And in doing that, it re, based on the amount of mixed-use land, we had, it, it reduces the capacity for employment. We could have assumed, I think, some of the assumptions in Vancouver, it assumes that there'll be more vertical mixed-use, so you can capture the same amount of employment with housing above it. That's not typically what we've seen in the unincorporated county. So it, it reduced our capacity for employment, and that's what necessitated us having to do some of these expansions for employment lands. The other.
So, so the, these areas that you're talking about, this is in, basically in, in direct relation to what you just said, where, where these mixed-used areas, we had sixty-fourty, but it was eighty-twenty, and then that wasn't even.
Right.
We're not even meaning that. So we went to ninety-ten, and because of that, we, we needed more employment land. And so that's what this is. Okay.
Exactly.
Like, one of the things I know, like, because I've been pretty involved with the city's code on this, same issue as far as, you know, living over commercial kind of thing, just doesn't really work in pencil. And so one of the, one of the options that we're taking is, we're bisecting themself. We have a, basically a lot. So like, you have the housing component, but then you have the commercial component, because an office building doesn't necessarily work underneath housing. So like on that parcel, you still get the split.
Yeah.
But you're just splitting the structures, which then makes it a little bit more.
Yep.
Functional. So I didn't know if the, the county was looking at the similar concept versus making the same building.
We can do a horizontal mixed-use, but like I said, there were, and I think there's a couple of parcels along five oh three, where the housing development's been done, they have commercial plots, but nothing's happening. And so, yeah, that, that's been a challenge. And, you know, the nature of commercial has changed more recently, so that's creating an issue. The other thing that we noticed, well, that we realized is that in our Highway ninety-nine area, that whole corridor, we did the, the Highway ninety-nine sub-area plan, and it allows for residential outright on some of these commercial properties, sort of the multifamily development. But our model was never updated to account for that, because we were using the call plan designation. And when we updated the model and went to zoning, we were able to account for that. And it just made sense to, we, we were starting to see some developments, residential in that corridor. So it made sense to include that in that model. And again, the effect is, it, it reduces our employment capacity. And so the combination of those two things is, is what's necessitating us to look at expanding for, for.
I have another, yeah, I have another question about.
Sure.
So it, with the employment, like, the jobs that are coming, like, the, the industry or whatever it is, do we have an idea of what land is being, I mean, what kind of employment is being, that's coming into the county? So like, are we, are we appropriately, appropriately zoned for the type of work that, like, people are trying to build the business in, in this area? So like, we don't have shops sitting vacant, because no one wants that, but there, like warehouse space or whatever it is. I, I'm not sure what it is, but I wondered if the county has a vision for what, what people are building here, or that, that's actually being utilized for employment?
But I think what. The estimates that we got from the state Employment Security Department, they have categories for employment. And so they're looking, what they're, kind of a similar thing, they're giving us their twenty forty-five projections of what that is. And I, I think, you know, the, some of the biggest growth is in, like, the medical, so the medical and health, were the big things around the, yeah, the potential new jobs. So around the existing hospitals. And that's kind of what is, and I don't have the other figures broken, memorized, but that seemed to be the, the biggest.
Area of growth.
Yeah, that we would see.
The land that we're proposing to take in up on Tenth, is that commercial land? What's the zoning that we're looking at for that?
So it's split. Yeah, let's. Yeah. So it's split between business park and commercial. So on the.
The west side, the west side is industrial, and then on the east side, I believe, is commercial.
Yep. So here it is. Yeah. So on the east side of.
Commercial.
On the east side of Tenth, it would be commercial, and then on the west side, it's business park.
Is that's light industrial?
This next park is very similar, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think the other, just south of there, I think we got a request to do an amendment to make that business park, because I think currently, yeah, currently it's mixed-use.
What, what is, what does general commercial allow for typically?
It's the broadest commercial, yeah. Okay. So the other areas, so in, in terms of housing, upzoning, all of the urban medium and urban high zones, again, it goes from R twelve to R forty-three. In this proposal, we were starting with R twenty-four to R fifty. When Elizabeth was here, we've had conversations, and we're looking to consolidate that into three different zones. So R twenty-four, R thirty-six, and R fifty. And so that's what we would probably propose for the preferred alternative. And so that's what we would probably propose for the preferred alternative. And the. So the existing multifamily zones would would change to that. There are certain areas and it's mostly these areas around the south of the fairgrounds. That were. Some were R twelve, some were mostly lower density multifamily that essentially we've. We are proposing to make those R twenty four. Let's see. And there was one. Mixed use property. That. We proposed to go to R forty five, there was a a site specific request. Conversations with the people who are looking at developing that property. There were some issues with the property being wet and that there might not be good access for commercial. We didn't want to lose the multifamily. So we made that R forty five and this alternative. In alternative three, we honored their request, I think, to be R twenty four. So you can see in this area, a lot of the R twenty four that's being proposed. Trying to. See if I can show you the. Like in alternative one or the. The current zoning is ranges from. R one twenty to R one seven five in this area. So part of the issue is that. This is where most of the the vacant land is. We looked at some other areas on the east side also to. Upzone from R one twenty to R one seven five. Just. There are some larger parcels that could take advantage and maybe in the future of redeveloping. And with the changes in the R one five, R one six and R one seven fives. It would allow you to go down to two thousand square foot lots. So. It's a, you know, there's houses on some of those, but they're acre to five acre lots. So it's just. Providing a future opportunity to do that. So that's that's where most of the the changes were that are part of the proposal to meet our. Our income band targets.
I don't know if we're jumping like so. We had the three different. Alternatives, land use alternatives, right? And and I know when we were talking about this before, we were talking about the each jurisdiction was. Providing that they were proposing their proposals and whatnot. Has the county gone through and kind of looked to see if they if they are meeting? The the allocations and meeting the requirements like because because there was a if they can't grow the urban growth boundary, right? If they don't need to, right? And so you that was part of the county's job. I'm just curious of where we are in that process.
So. As part of the environmental impact statement. For each of the jurisdictions, we have, you know, what their allocations were and what. What their plans demonstrate. I think we were looking at it today, there was. We have like an excess capacity for residential in alternative two of like. Thirty five to thirty eight thousand housing units. And in alternative three, it's like forty five thousand. A lot of that's because of the site specific request. So as we. Move to the preferred, we know that we have excess capacity. That that's going to have to be reconciled.
Okay.
I think that's all I have some open for questions if you have any.
I I remember if you could, if you could email, I know it's on the website, but if you could just email the agricultural land study. To the planning planning commission that that saved me a step.
Yeah, we will ask staff to to do so. I have that on the next. Excuse me, on the next steps. If we go to that slides, and I think it's one of the last slides. Slide page eighteen. On your handout, so we have next steps. As I indicated earlier, the agricultural land studies out. I will ask Jeff, who is the clerk to the PC to send it to you individually. So you receive that, but it's it's out. I shared with you last time I was here that in my update to you that the council will be having a work session. On November twelfth. Beginning at nine AM, there are three work sessions that the twenty twenty six budget. Which could take long, then followed by this. The the consultant presenting their report to the council. And then we have another work session dealing with some dealing with the Vancouver UGA, what Jose went through with you. And responding to some of the questions or concern that the city of Vancouver have raised. So those are the three work session on November twelfth. But we will send that report to you. The other thing that we will do is we are also providing that report to the. County appointed agricultural advisory commission. We asked them for their input. I think they have a meeting on November nineteenth to also review that. And it will be out there for the public to see. That's the reason why the report is out and posted. The council asked for this analysis. Now it's done. I had a meeting with. All the series jurisdiction today, which I do every month. And there were questions as of of county staff. You're not asking me that, but what would the council do now? With the with the with the report? Following this work session on the twelfth, I don't know the nature of the question that the councillors will ask. And the commission reviewing it, I don't know what question or recommendation that they may. Ask, but the council will have to make a decision one way or the other. Because that study will inform us. On what the preferred would look like. So stay tuned.
So, sorry, I was just going to ask, so on the twelfth, the 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 land use study is going to be presented to the council. And then from there, you you will take that input and then and then come before the the planning commission. Or like when is the planning commission having a work session on it at all? Or or should we just go sit in with the?
I wasn't planning on. A work session with the planning commission because you have, I think we have another work session this month.
Yeah, I I was thinking that. We're preparing for. January in the hearing. I think what makes the most sense is to maybe have the conversation about the ag study that December fourth. Meeting. Because the. The ag commission will have had their meeting. And if they're making a recommendation, we can share that with you all. And also whatever comes out of the the council meeting. And then you'll have had ample time to read it. Yeah. Because I it's it's a. It's ultimately the council's decision on how they want to. Incorporate that report, but it's really meant to inform. Them and their decision making and you all as well. In this election of the preferred, because that's kind of what's. What's driven this to this point.
So. With the ag study, this is the first ag study that's been what since nineteen ninety four, nineteen ninety six?
Nineteen ninety four, yes.
Is one of the main reasons for the ag study to see how. There's some jurisdictions that are trying to increase their urban growth area. So there the ag study, how any proposals for urban growth boundary? How it's going to impact the ag. Status of those lands or?
In order to, so the the in order to include ag land in your urban growth area. You have to go through the ag de designation process.
Okay.
And there were recent changes to that where you couldn't do it on an area wide basis. It had to be county wide. So that's.
So that's why the ag study, so they can be done county wide.
And and it can't be site specific. So. Yeah.
And and so we, I mean, this has just come out and will eventually get built into the the buildable lands model. Or no, not. So I I'm just curious, how does it get incorporated into the plan for what how we how we do the preferred?
So it's evidence.
Okay.
It's it's facts. And we're required to have evidence in the record that supports. The council's policy decisions. There it is.
So basically, it'll be a reference point for the county to.
Yeah.
To decide what how to manipulate their preferred alternative.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Thank you.
Sure.
I will only add planning commissioner Jeremy that. We don't do the VBLM in the rural area or in the resource area. This study is outside the urban growth boundary. Yes, it only looked at areas currently designated as agriculture. And also looked at rural zoning, rural five, ten and twenty. It excludes areas currently designated as forest. It also, I think I mentioned that it exclude rural centers. Rural centers are Amboy, Faggle Lake, Meadowglade, Arkansas. Very few of that, and then any of the lands that are in the scenic. The gorge area is also excluded, so this just looks at the. Mining is not on the table, a decision that the council made and forest is not on the table. If they had added mining and forests, there's no way we're going to. Complete that study within the timeframe. Yep, they just made the decision to focus on ag. Because of the issue that. In that it was in front of them, the cities that were that included ag designated property within what they proposed that the county considered adopting of. Yes.
No, we have another one in November.
Go ahead, Jose.
Right, we have another meeting in two weeks. Yeah, we're just going to continue going through, maybe we'll. I think we're going to have some chapters. I know you've looked at the goals and policies, I think. The previous meeting, there were some chapters and so we're going to be bringing some additional chapters. And just sort of high level, the the goals and policies that you reviewed were the sort of the meat and potatoes. And these are just edits that were done to the chapters. In some cases, updating tables and and maps and some wordsmithing. But I think the other, the bulk of the meetings will be sort of talking about some of the alternatives. And just kind of continue that. Kind of refresher so that. Because I think we had the same conversation exactly a year ago. For what was going to be included in the DEIS. So, yeah.
I was I was curious on how the the comment period. I know you obviously, we see the signs coming in and how how was how is that being received by the the public?
We are beginning to receive comments. We still have what very soon it'll be like. They could give three weeks left. So. Comment is due five PM. On November thirtieth, that's the cutoff. Yeah, so but we are we are receiving comments and what happens in terms of process. Those comments will then be. Responded to. When we complete the final, we just don't issue a response. The response will be packaged along with the final EIS. And then see how we. We responded to the comments received, that's how it is done. And the final final. EIS document is what kicks off the adoption process. Because we have to send that, you know, we think we have. Eight weeks or not eight weeks, but we think you have. Five months or so left, you don't, because we have to submit everything three months. To begin the sixty day commerce review. So technically, we don't have six months or seven months left. We have like maybe five or four.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What happens if the council decides? They don't like any of the three alternatives as they're written and they want to change. And make the preferred alternative different. Sorry.
Why would you do that, Chris?
Thank you, thank you, my. Thank you, my esteemed attorney. There are, you know, I I keep on saying that the. The project schedule is subject to change.
Yes.
Okay. If that's what happened and if. What? Is in the preferred. Is in anything that was studied in the draft. DEIS, which is the same thing. We will be subject to do what is called supplemental. Environmental review to consider those if it's not already considered. We we went through that similar process in the twenty sixteen. Plan update, some of you may be here, but Carl, you may remember, there was introduction of all four. Yes, so that introduction of all four. I have to say it publicly. The one of the commissioners, councillors at the time wanted to run me out of town for. Making a determination as the super responsible official that we have to do a supplemental, but. I was right and we had to do a supplemental and. All four was eventually thrown out because wasn't really a public process in the way that it was developed. But I've stopped it, that's what happened. Did I answer your question? Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Any more questions? All right.
This review is very helpful. Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, it's good.
A year.
And that's why we are coming back, refreshing your mind and for Carl, I don't think Carl and Mark went through this. But here we are, just refreshing your minds about what was done before and where we'll be going next. I'll stop there.
Jose, is your?
For members of the planning commission?
Can you hear me?
Can I hear you? Anything up there? I think someone's trying to talk up there.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, Kyle, I can hear you. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, Jose, is your GIS map, is that available online?
Yes, you can probably even. Yes, um, you can probably even, I, I can send you a link, you can probably get there through the PowerPoint, the, it's, it's, there's a hyperlink on there. Uh, but I can send you the link to it.
That good, Kyle?
Yeah, I was trying to see if I could find the, the link, but Jose, if you wouldn't mind just sending it to me.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. With that said, have a good evening.